Open first public hearing for the comprehensive plan. Joint Comprehensive Plan. Would you like to release it?
We will. I'm going to plead rise. Are you here? Lord gracious have my father, we just want to pause right now and just give a few thanks and asking your blessings upon this meeting. Help our business to be your business, Lord, because you are perfect in every way. Help us to do your will. Give us over stands, Lord. Thank you for all the people here tonight. Go with them, Lord. Be with them in their special ways. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Give us wisdom. Amen.
Amen.
Yeah, Jordan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Thank you. Number two, we have the Joint Comprehensive Plan update for years 2023 to 2027. Gretchen Luthardt Woodgun. We'll go over that.
Thank you very much. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Appreciate the opportunity to present this draft copy of the comprehensive plan. My name's Gretchen Luthardt and I work for the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. The commission helps local governments such as cities and counties in our 15 county area to tap into federal and state resources and programs like the area aging, area agency on aging and grants and loans, covering everything from housing to recreation to sewer and drinking water to economic development. Part of the process of getting that money and from the grants and loans often involves showing that planning has taken place. There is a plan of how the money will be spent and there's a real need that has been identified. The Fannin County Joint Comprehensive Plan is part of that process of showing where the needs are and what kind of projects will be done. It has been updated. This is a five-year update of the plan. It is, it has been put together with the full support of the county and each one of the incorporated cities, McAsville, Blue Ridge and Morganton. The leaders of those governments had full support in developing the plan. In addition, we had stakeholders from the community and from each one of those towns and the county. It's okay. Each one of the, from the county and each one of those towns, stakeholders gathered at three different public meetings, which the general public was also invited to and they attended as well. We also had a community survey that was available online to further gather input from the public. This is just a plan, not a binding contract. And since it is a draft document, we are accepting comments on it at this time. And those comments would be through August and they can be sent to me, comments sent to me or of course to the commissioners. And I think you guys know how to contact the commissioners. I have sheets of paper with my contact information if you wish to have a comment on that. The rest of our process involves, at this time, this week, as soon as we can, we will be sending it on to the state for their review and comment. If everything goes smoothly, either in September or October, the commission and the city councils of the towns will be adopting this as their plan for the next five years. So if anybody wants my contact information, please see me.
Any example, if you have around here, just say, go from there.
Yeah, does anybody want my contact information? My feelings aren't hurt. Okay. Anybody else? And as I said, feel free to, you can call, you can email, you can write an letter, whatever you would like to do. That would be great.
All right. Will, does anybody get any, anything they'd like to go over on the comprehensive plan? Ms. Thompson?
And if you would like to review the document, I'm here, it's on our website. So that is, I'm going to give you your account so you can, yeah, I forgot to mention that. It's available on our website for review.
Donna Thompson, I live here in Blue Ridge. I had a couple of questions. One was on page two, they talk about a capital improvements element is not required because spending does not charge impact fees. This was the only question I had at the first public meeting of why we are not considering impact fees, both for Fannin. I've also asked the city of Blue Ridge the same question. You know, we went through, and this kind of ties to one of the goals. So the Fannin County goal number seven was we will carefully plan the expansion of infrastructure such as sewer and water into areas where it will enhance residential, commercial and industrial development. So I didn't know we were tied to sewer in the county, correct?
We're not.
We're not. So that's a huge infrastructure cost unless you're tying into the city of Blue Ridge and there's, you know, questions on their side about their infrastructure and getting the updates that they need. So with no impact fees, who is going to pay for the expanded infrastructure? We went through this with the city in the previous administration when they attempted that massive annexation where they were going out five and five fifteen. And developers were brazen enough at the public meetings there to tell us how much they were going to lose in gross revenues. And the one of them was saying, you know, he was going to lose like $63 million in gross revenues. So forgive me for saying this, but I don't necessarily feel sorry for that when the infrastructure costs are going to be put on the shoulders of the taxpayers. And we did ask at that time, you know, how the city planned to pay for the expansion of infrastructure and the only response we got was that they would look for grants. And as you know, grants are not given. You apply with a lot of other people. And now I guess it's good we have that money to go to, but when we start talking about expansion of infrastructure, I know the two builders brought it up at the public, first public meeting about looking at expansion out five fifteen to accommodate the development that was coming. So they obviously know something maybe that we don't know, but I am concerned for that, for what it's going to burden the tax, potentially burden the taxpayers with. The other thing is I would just like to, I know there's probably nobody here from Morganton tonight, but just to go on the record and say lots of applause for Morganton. When they started their goals, they started them out with the goal of our city administration is to be an organization that proudly serves our community by. And then they list out about six or seven things like providing safe water, safe environment for our employees, quality service to our customers, developing a business friendly and consumer friendly environment, creating team effort with our staff, residents and customers. I applaud Morganton because the county, Blue Ridge and the Casville all started out their goals, their very first goal was the focus on what we do for our tourists. And you know, the last time I was before you, I spoke about quality of life for our residents and I would really like to see it, us get a focus that we take care of our people who live here full time and we keep them in mind. I know tourism is important, but our residents are too. And I'm afraid that we're being impacted so severely by the short-term rentals and quality of life and changes to our ordinances that are coming about as a result of what the rental industry is giving to us. Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, I think this board is, we do do that. So, and no impact fees, I think we've discussed that before.
I think it's like Mr. Nickson, we're trying to figure that out exactly how this one looks moving forward. Hopefully we can come up with something similar.
But our citizens are first, our residents.
Even though don't appear that way.
Sometimes.
Anyone else?
What are you on, cookies?
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For Ms. Lockhart. When we did the planning next door here, one of the questions that I had that came up was that in doing this plan, they say we would, our population would go down in five years. Do you remember that?
Well, it was the population trend over, maybe about 30 years. And so there's different sources of information.
About the five year, that would be, that's what we're looking at, the five-year plan. And I, and I thought that maybe it wasn't you, I think it was your assistant that said that, that they did say that we would, our population for Fannin County would decrease. And I was wanting to ask where they found that information.
Well, there, okay. Of course, we had the census, which is an actual count in 2020. Then the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget does projections and those projections go out to like 2060. And they do that so that they can plan where they're going to put roads and schools.
Right, right.
So the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget for Fannin County in the long term, and the graph is in here, I did put that in there. They do project a decline in your population over, in the next, like out to 2050, 2060.
2050.
Yeah. And so their projections, I'm sure there's several things that go into their projections. So that's not a census thing. Census doesn't have projections. That's not what happened.
Right.
This is Georgia and their efforts to plan. Several things might go into why it appears as if you're going to have a decline. One thing is you have an older population because you have a lot of retirees. And, but the thing of it is you keep having more retirees arrive. So you may not really experience that decline that they project, that the state projects because you keep having this replacement of retirees coming up to retire.
Is this people that are here are natives or just ones that come in, including our rentals or how do they?
Well, that, that number, that projection should be your resident population.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And so for your resident population, they projected decline. Another factor.
I was surprised by that.
Yeah, it was somewhat surprising and it was, to my mind, to just consider it a projection, not a, you know, something for sure that's going to happen because.
But it is a big factor.
Yeah. In what they decide to send up here, yeah.
Right. I mean, it's, to me, it's one of the key factors that how we plan. If we, if we're going to have more people or if we're going to have less, that's, that's something we got to consider. So I wanted to try to get a grasp on that and to see what reasoning they had economically or whatever it might be.
Another factor, overall, as you know, there's a trend in the U.S. of folks leaving rural areas and going to urban areas. The trend has been steady, you know, there's fewer farming folks and other folks working in rural areas. So the trend is more toward urban areas. That too might go in their projections, but you know.
I would be thinking opposite. I mean, I've heard a lot of people that wanted to get out of the city with COVID and all these things and come here and settle and build homes here. And I think you see a lot of that already going on with construction.
Right. And yeah, this is a recent trend that perhaps the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget did not anticipate.
So we want to get this as accurate as possible so that it can, you know, be helpful to Fannin County. And that's something that just concerned me a little bit, see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I think in here I discuss a little bit the reasons and yeah, I mean, it's just a projection, not necessarily.
One of the things that I, yeah, one of the things that I think that have been talked about with the city and, you know, we, we looked at it too. We're looking at affordable housing because of the people that really need that here. Seems to be more and more of a, something that we need to really take note of. And so that's, you know, that kind of relates to the population as well.
Yes, because you have workers coming in.
Exactly.
In the tourist industry, it's a service industry. So you need workers.
Right. Not, well, not just the people, the workers, but also the people that here in Fannin County, the natives, the people that, with inflation and all that going up, they need something that they can really be affordable to them.
Right.
Let's just talk about here 2060 C. That's just a guess. I mean, that's.
Right. We want to do the best job we can for right now. For the next five years or whatever we're doing.
Michael, yeah.
I was just going to ask, what y'all talked about is those numbers, is that full-time and, full-time residents?
Yes, those would be the government.
Maybe the reason why the numbers are going down is because everything's getting sold off into these rental things and so the, the population's still here, but it's just not full-time population or, or full-time people. And, you know, it just seems like especially within the last couple of years, there's been an explosion of that. You know, there's less places to live because everything's turned into rental properties.
Who's that?
I was in the planning committee, planning meetings along with Donna. And one of the things that was discussed the most was that population decline. Common sense tells you that if properties are being bought up by out-of-state people and they are buying these properties sight unseen and they are turning them into the Airbnbs, so they are not full-time residents and they are pricing out all of your affordable housing, if you continue that way, you don't have your workers for your restaurants, you don't have your workers for your motels, you don't have your workers for the tourist industry that Fannin County is based upon. It's, it's our only industry because we, we've gotten away from every other industry. So common sense, if you take those particular factors into consideration, I see our population declining and I see in 2025 years, Fannin County becoming either, it's either going to have to completely change its industry or it's going to become a ghost town because you don't have enough housing for the workers. And if you don't have the workers, then you don't have the tourist industry anymore that's going to draw your tourists and businesses are going to close, population is going to decline. And that makes, to me, that makes more sense of where these numbers are coming from than what's being presented. Number two, another major thing that came out in that planning commission planning meeting was that we wanted to preserve our mountain tops. And I know that in other meetings, people have come, you know, Joe's come up to the podium and he's asked for it. And again, our tourist industry is our mountain streams, our hiking, our fishing. And if we keep scalping our mountains for all these rental properties to give them a good view of whatever, pretty soon they're going to be viewing a ghost town. That's just my two cents worth into answering your question, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
That's why I think, that's why this board is working on preserving that.
Right.
So we are working on that.
I know people, again, I know it's not well backed, but, and, and, you know, if I can, by the next meeting, if I can put a stop to it, I'll put a stop to it. I mean, that's just, but there are legalities to go with that, that you have to go by and you have to do this. And I mean, it's.
Steps, yes.
Yeah, there, there are steps that you have to take. And I mean.
We're taking them.
There, there's.
We're moving that way.
There's so many moving parts in this camp, so many moving things that you have to do. And honestly, if we can snap a finger, I don't know why I'd be back snapping fingers, go back 30 years, guess what? Snap a finger, go back 30 years. But unfortunately I can't. And so we have to find the best way to move forward. And yeah, it's, it's not overnight. And, you know, I'm not going to use that phrase anymore because last time I used the phrase, you know, I, I, somebody's going to jump up here and wring my neck off, but it is what it is. But we, we are working on this and believe that or not.
I think a lot of it is perception, you know, like she's saying, you know, you look up at the mountain and all of a sudden they'll have trees on, you know? So it kind of brings to light, okay, if it's happening there, you know, everywhere you look, that's what it seems like happening. And, you know, we've talked about rentals before.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate, well, just like when Walmart came in, a lot of small businesses, it took their business. But whose fault's that? The people that shop at Walmart. Although it's saving me money, but I shopped at Walmart, so I'm a contributor per se is why that small business closed. At Mom and Pop Shop that I went through for, you know, 15, 20 years, I helped put him out of business because I went to Walmart. So I, I think everybody has to take somewhat responsibility for, you know, what's going on. They just have to look at their own habits and what benefits them. And it is tough. You know, the price of homes is jacked up, you know, just because people are flip-flopping their 401K money into real estate. That's not going to last forever, you know? So affordable housing, you got to look at more than just the housing. Gasoline in Blue Ridge is 30 cents more than it is in Blairfield, you know? So 30 cents for, you know, tank of gas for these people who have a good travel distance back and forth to work. That's part of it. I don't quite understand why there's such a big difference just in gas. But even milk in Blairfield is cheaper than it is in Blue Ridge. You know, is that because they're gaining on that tourism or that affects your local people?
Well, it's like the chairman said, we're, we're, we've all, we all were raised here and we love our area and, you know, we're trying to do the best we can to get a hold of it. But it's, like he said, there's so many steps, you have guidelines, laws, rules, and you have to go by all of this. And it, and it, he's right. If we could stop it all tonight, we'd do it. I mean, but you hadn't put it in perspective to where you try to, you try to help your area. But it's, it's hard. It's just like all the ordinances. You go out and you try to talk to people, you go to the paper, you just see common folk out here and you ask them their opinion on it and, and they tell you and, and you try to, you try to absorb all this and along with your own feelings about it. And then, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a hard thing, so.
And there's no doubt those are thankless jobs.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we, we ask for it.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying. If you stand up, you take it, you know, they're thankless jobs, but they're still a job to do. And I think, I don't know, people in today's politics look at so much, you know, I voted for it, but it ain't going to shift for me. I choose to where it is now, but.
I think I told Ms. Thompson back there and the gentleman at the back, sometimes I miss open furniture. Like all I see. But at the same time, believe it or not, I really, I love this job. And if y'all choose to put somebody in here next time, so will I. I come in here with a four-year mentality, you know, that's, I've never been here, you know? I come in here with a four-year mentality. And it gets run me off before, then I understand. But we'll do the best we can in four years. Y'all choose to put me back here another time, I'll do the best I can for the next forever, however long God gives me another breath, you know? Because I'm not, I'm not deserving another breath, I know that. But I'll do the best I can. And, and I understand, I knew this for, for over 30 years. We can't please everybody, fully understand that.
Absolutely. Not, not probably one of them, but I appreciate that.
But the thing about it is, if on certain things, if we can agree to disagree and still come up with a solution, that's what we're here to do. And, and anytime, I promise you, I don't have an ego. I promise that. And I'll listen to anybody. And, and just about everybody in here has been, my officer called me on the phone more than one time. And, and if, if we can come up with a solution, absolutely, I'll, I'll talk to you till tomorrow. But let's do that. Let's, hey, we, we ask for suggestions on the comprehensive plan, we ask for suggestions on, on other things. Put them out there because I don't know everything, this is all about everything. And if anybody does, I'll swap with you right now, I promise. It's a glad to.
Like, like I said, it's a thankless job and I appreciate that someone does raise their hand because there's so many of us that will come in here, will complain, but we ain't raising our hand.
Well, I can promise you one thing, this board's working for the people of Fannin County. We're going to do that.
And I, I just want to say, for me, that, you know, the, the things that I bring up and all that, I don't tell them, I'm not, I'm not firing y'all. All I'm doing is just saying what's on my mind and that's, and I know, you know, you feel the same way and all that, but all I'm doing is just, is.
Discussing, yeah.
Just, just, you know, saying what's on my mind and, and, but I'm definitely not throwing stones on things like that.
And really one of our strengths is right here in this room, okay? It's called unity, okay? And we can agree to disagree like they said, but we can still work together. If we work together, stronger than just bickering. We've all seen that when some places or another, but, you know, this is, this is part of our strength and, and I appreciate everybody wanting to tell us what you have. Don't, not be afraid and then us listening to it. That's a big part of it. That's our strength. That's our unity right there.
In our actions, I think, if you stop and look around the neighborhood, we're doing the same with the two cities. We, we want all the, all the three cities, number one and all that do well and, you know.
Ms. Thompson, I'll give you the closing remark.
Okay. I actually did reach out to the State Office of Planning and Budget and the director sent me over to the person who had ownership of the project for Fannin or the calculation. The first response I got from her said the decrease in population is mostly due to an older population in accounting. As we project further in the future, we are not expecting this population to be replaced by new verse, leading to a decrease in overall population. If you have any questions, let me know. So I did, I followed up with her because that doesn't make sense to me because if an old person dies, their house doesn't go away. Their house is going to be sold to somebody. So when you look at the cold, hard facts on that, that, that population is going to be replaced. The, the thing that kind of skews it is in her second response, she said, we do consider people moving or migration into the. The, the thing that kind of skews it is in her second response, she said, "We do consider people moving or migration into the projections, but this only impacts population when someone moves into the county from a different county or a different state. If you're an example of an empty house, if someone down the street or maybe an apartment moved into that empty house, it would not change the projected population." But all your population is not the move within your county, there's going to be external, you know, move in. So, that kind of skews it, and then she said, "Our migration rates are based on IRS data for each county. Short-term rental data," because I did ask for that question, "is not explicitly included in the data we use for our projections."
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, will you?
Thank you. Ninety-eight, when I moved in. You look across the railroad tracks over there, that, the inner street down through that, all of that in ninety-eight was mom and pop, uh, little businesses that were just selling mostly junk in their stores, it was a flea market type situation up and down through there. So, from there to now, that has completely changed. Everything over there, I doubt any of them buildings are leased, I property, I figured most of them bought the property up. And that's, that's the main attraction as far as, uh, people coming in for the weekend, because they like to go downtown somewhere. But that's what in twenty-seven years, so if you don't get a grip on it now, you ain't going to know what it's going to look like in twenty years. Because I, I, I think it'll change drastically, it changed drastically from ninety-eight, and there's no reason to think it's not going to change drastically again.
All right, well, I want to thank all of you for your comments, and we took some notes, hopefully we can get some other things moving a little quicker, hopefully. So, with that, I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, you guys good to move on, or we need like two minutes, just friends a minute? Let's, let's, uh...
Two minutes.
If everybody's all right, let's come back, uh, uh, for our next meeting, or regular meeting. Mr. Patterson, if you have a little feeling, if you can get it.
I do. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I want to introduce to you and continue with what we've been doing with, uh, uh, our prayer, and I know we've already had a prayer, but I, I most doesn't feel like, you know, you keep praying enough, especially in our business. So, uh, and two, we've started doing this, this is our third person, uh, different departments of our employees. We have, uh, men of great character, men and women of great character, and, uh, faith, and, uh, so, uh, we've, uh, had, had tonight from the EMS department, Bill Brown, and Bill Brown is a paramedic, a firefighter, and he is a EMT instructor. We're really proud of, uh, Bill coming in tonight and opening this up with a prayer, uh, and if he would come at this time, and lead us, I would appreciate that. Let's all stand. Go, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir. Dear AMI Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for your so many blessings, Lord Jesus. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to assemble ourselves together tonight, Lord Jesus. Lord, you said we're two or more gathered together in your name, you're with us, Lord Jesus, and we just thank you for that. Lord, we ask that you just give us peace and understanding, and Lord, that you just lead God and direct us, and give us wisdom in all the things that we do. Lord, we just ask that you just keep us humble, and let us remember that we're all human, we all are fallen by grace, and we're not worthy, but because of you, Lord Jesus, we are greater than we could be. We just give you praise, honor, glory for it all, in your precious, sweet, holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate that, and we are blessed to have, uh, our employees, and thank God for them, they, they go over and above most of town.
They join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, gentlemen, under unfinished business, uh, number two, we have the approval of the minutes of the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two regular scheduled board meeting. Mr. Patterson, any areas, roll missions in the minutes?
No, sir, I have none, and I haven't looked at it, no, I am ready to go.
Mr. Sursen?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, approve the minutes of the twenty, of July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two regular scheduled board meeting, in the next first second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under new business, number three, board discussion or action on comprehensive plan. Gentlemen, we've, uh, just had our public hearing on that, do you have any, uh, discussion before we, um, or is there any, anything we need to look at before we, uh, move to accept this?
No, I have nothing. I have nothing, I, we've covered it for you, that's over.
Okay, um, like being said, I'll ask for a motion that we accept a Fannie County joint comprehensive plan, which will be years twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-seven, I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? Number four, under new business, we need a board discussion or action on laws to renew negotiations with the city of Blue Ridge and the city of McCaswell. This is our local option sales tax. And, um, just to bring us all up to speed, we, uh, we didn't have, uh, meetings regarding laws and spots. We're, we're having to say that we were able to, uh, to maintain the, the split. Blue Ridge is getting fourteen percent, McCaswell getting ten point two five, and, and that leaves Fannie County with seventy-five point seventy-five percent of the local option sales tax. Just wanted to, uh, to bring everybody up to speed on, on the laws for renegotiations. We, we were able to finalize that at our last meeting, so, um, and again, is this...
We part of it, this board to approve it, and then each of the cities to approve it.
All right.
And each of the, uh, each of the cities that are qualified to participate, which would be the city of Blue Ridge and the city of McCaswell, sorry.
So, since we knew, I had to ask, what we had to do on that, so my apologies, so, uh, um...
It doesn't happen, but once every year.
Well...
We can't hear you back.
Somebody else wasn't there either, I'm just mumbling.
We can't hear you back.
I'm mumbling, I'm sorry.
So, if you're here ten years from now, then you'll remember that.
I'll remember this, for sure. So, I'll make a motion that we accept, um, the, the percentage split, uh, of the local option sales tax as presented. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, moving along to the renegotiation of spots. Once again, uh, we, we have come up... We've come up with a, uh, an agreement with the cities of McCaswell and Blue Ridge. It's a pretty hard negotiation, I'm not going to lie to you, um, but at the same time, we, uh, we come up with an agreement that the city of Blue Ridge would receive seven point five percent, city of McCaswell would receive six point one percent, and the county would, uh, keep eighty-six point four percent of the special purpose local option sales tax, the spots. Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
Basically, what we're doing with that percentage, like, a lot of it will be on our public works roads, you want to kind of go over things?
Yep, and, and what we will do is we'll, we'll end up getting that percentages of what goes into, in, in this, basically, uh, the same things we're doing. It's just we'll go over the percentages, uh, of what goes into, uh, the road department, the public safety, um, water authority, you know? So, um, that will, that will come up, um, probably on our next meeting, or at a later meeting, when we work on it.
We have to have it finished by October thirty-first.
Okay, so we will have that done, so maybe at our next meeting, or the following one, we can have those percentages, uh, of what goes where for us, yeah. Mr. Sursen?
No, sir, it's good, uh, I think both cities got a little bit more, we're going to help them out, and, uh, we done well.
All right, I'll, uh, make a motion that we approve, uh, the percentage breakdown for, uh, for spots, and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Anderson, why you doing that too? I would like just to emphasize how much both of these laws and the spots helps our county, and you're talking about the county, our, it helps us as natives, the people here in this county, our residents, uh, very much so, and we need to, to make sure that, you know, we come up to vote for that, that we do, you know, get that in. Did you not say right?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, I mean, uh, the bridges and the roads and the, the equipment, we've upgraded a lot of equipment, uh, ambulances...
Yep.
Fire trucks, uh, check, help the jail out.
All those things, yeah.
All right, number six is the board discussion or action on a resolution on speed limit at the new Fannie County Board of Education location, uh, being on, on Highway seventy-six. As it stands, um, when you're coming from Lakewood, the speed limit is forty-five, once it gets to, um, the dam, it becomes thirty-five. Once you cross the spillway bridge, it goes back to forty-five, and then drops to thirty at Marina Drive, that's a lot of ground. So, um, this resolution would, uh, would make the speed limit, as it comes off the spillway bridge, uh, thirty, and could, and it would run with the city limits. So, it would be forty-five to thirty-five to thirty, and tie in with the city limits for that stretch there. I think it would be safer as the buses are exiting, um, and if people are going in and out of the new facility over there, I think it would be, uh, beneficial for, for everyone, uh, to do this, so, um, Commissioner Patterson, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I do agree, uh, most, I know many of you have seen the new school facility, the bus garage, and they're having an admin building over there, but, uh, it's going to increase traffic, uh, and I think that would help for safety reasons tremendously, to do it that way, I agree.
Mr. Sursen?
Is the school still going to, are they going to put anything like, like they have at other places, like, uh, the flashlights or anything?
Yeah, they're, they're actually reaching out, uh, to Zach Ratcliffe, um, and going to order those signs as well, um, so they're, that's... They were waiting on us to do this, and that's, that's why they were waiting, so... Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. I will make a motion, uh, to approve the resolution, uh, to impose and clarify speed limits in the unincorporated areas of Fannie County, more specifically, um, the area of Old Seventy-Six, um, at the spillway bridge to the city limits of Blue Ridge, to, to drop that down to thirty miles an hour, I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number seven, we had Public Works Director Zach Ratcliffe, uh, by Telson, uh, with the Fannie County L-Meg twenty-twenty-two paving bid. I believe this bid is actually for the Cut King Road, um, so Mr. Ratcliffe, you and Ms. Dawson want to take over? Mr. Ratcliffe, you good?
I can.
Okay.
We're opening up the bids right now, Mr. Ratcliffe.
Okay, how, how many bids do we have to get?
We have three.
Three, great, okay.
Do you have any comments before we share them with the public?
Uh, no, sir, no.
All right, so the first bid that I'm opening is the Caldwell Construction Company bid.
She can't find her number, it must be three, huh?
Okay, I have it, it's back here, it's back here, I was like, where is it? All right, for Cut King Road, uh, the total price is one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. For Friendship Road, the total price is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. For a total, for the two projects, or the two roads, of one million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents.
And before we go any further, just, just so we know that Cut King and Friendship actually merge, and Friendship brings us out at the, basically, the state line on Spur Sixty, so that would be the loop from, I don't know, the highway all the way to Spur Sixty, so, just so we know.
All right, the second bid received was from Johnson Paving Company. All right. Cut King, total bid was one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Friendship Road, one hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, for a total bid price of one million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And the third and final bid was from C.W. Matthews Contracting Company. Cut King Road, one million, five hundred and twenty... Cut King Road, one million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Friendship Road, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. For a total bid price of one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Are you still there, sir?
Johnson, at this point, Johnson's Johnson Paving is the lowest bidder at this point.
The lowest bidder.
Yes, sir.
By approximately six hundred, I mean by approximately three hundred thousand, it's not quite that.
Okay, all right, uh because I'm not there to be able to see those things, then I would I would ask you, we table this go next meeting, if you guys don't mind, I would like to uh just double check this thing out and be sure we're right, everything out without was kind of dealt.
Okay, I don't have issues with that, I don't, tell me, Mr. Sersing?
No, no, it sounds good.
All the bids are good for thirty days from the date of August the ninth.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's that's all that I have, I really appreciate you guys working with me on this.
No problem, what was what was the anticipated uh date that you're wanting to get this thing started?
Uh just as soon as we get it, we get it, we settle on you guys vote on on the whoever we get.
Yes, sir.
And at that point, we'll get it later out to to uh uh go ahead and proceed. And Lynn will Lynn will have to do that for us too, so uh just as quick as we get everything finalized, we'll do that.
Okay, good, maybe try to get it in the fall.
Uh yeah, we'll have to get it pretty quick here, so we're ready, be pretty quick, but but anyway, there uh we'll we'll definitely get something worked out here pretty quick.
Sounds good, Mr. Ratcliffe, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, sir, thank all ladies.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I'll uh feel that he's uh got a point there, we always want to try to make sure we're burning apples to apples and uh I'll make the most of it, we table this um approval until our next meeting, um till our next regular meeting and give him an opportunity to go over. I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All right, number eight, we have uh Chief Appraiser Donald Cochran enter into a vendor contract.
I'm Donald Cochran, I'm with the Fann County Board of Assessors. Um what we're discussing this afternoon is a uh vendor contract that the Board of Assessors uh elected to vote at their last board meeting, which was July the twenty-seventh, um to enter into a contract with this company. Um the company itself offers a software, uh and this software will assist us in processing our owner transactions. The use of this method will save money in many areas, we are using a lot of ink cartridges and paper. This is kind of going with a, it is going with a paper-free method. Our mapping company will be able to pull from the same software, so when we have ownership changes or splits or transactions, they'll be able to map from this. They'll have a username that allows that. And um we are, we know that it'll assist us in many different man-hours, it'll simplify our process and allow us to utilize some of the staff that are working this transactions right now in other capacities. Um the cost for this opportunity for us is sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars, and that cost is per year. There is an additional fee and it is a one-time fee, and that's fifteen hundred, and that's for training and implementing uh this software into the Fann County Assessors Office. There's many different counties that are currently doing this in the state of Florida and in the state of Georgia, and I spoke to four, four or five of them and got great feedback from it. Um I'm requesting, I did request that Miss Dawson review the contract prior to the Board of Assessors meeting, and I have her blessing. Uh this expense will be covered by my current budget, so I'm not asking for any money, I'm just asking for the board to enter into a contract because that's what the law says we should do.
And this is gonna help your office?
Absolutely.
And it's gonna save us money in other places?
Yes, it will.
Do you have any anticipate how much it may save us, just I mean, how much are we spending on the department?
I really want to know until I try it, but the different departments that I talked to, they said, I mean, you, it's significant savings because what I've got somebody working right now doing eight hours a day, I can do a deed in four minutes. So.
What's the time normally, but right now?
It's 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 probably about, depends on if it's just a straight changeover and it's just an ownership change with a clean chain of title. Probably looking at thirty to forty-five minutes, maybe a little less.
Four minutes.
Some of them are even less than four minutes, if it's matched the system up and it matches with everything on the PT sixty-one, it it'll be even less.
You talk to other counties that use this system?
I have, yep, I have, they really like it, they really like it. Um it's not nothing really new, new, there's about ten counties in the state of Georgia, but Florida's been using it for quite some time. They just rolled over and spread out their business into the state of Georgia and found out it works real well with the wing out national appraising program. So their systems already wrote for what system that the majority of counties in the state of Georgia are using. So we're just trying to streamline this process because we have a lot of transactions to go through.
You're gonna have some people to come by, if we have issues with it, check it out and teach you how to use it.
We have a training program and we have services, it's all connected in, I guess.
If we have any any give, any any problems, they'll come look at it.
Yes, they will.
Service contract.
What's the terms of this contract, I mean, is land?
It's a year, it's a year, a year.
So we can, if we.
Yep. If it does not work out, you just offer a name.
Okay. It's under your current budget, right?
It is.
Well, I just, honest with you, if it's uh it's gonna make us more efficient, I'd like to see exactly how much money it's gonna save us in the long run. Sometimes in investment, it costs for an investment, sometimes you can get that money back in minutes on, so.
Oh, yes.
Um you know, with with this situation here, um it's coming out of your budget, I'm not trying to do anything else, so I make it worth a shot, so, do you have anything?
Does the fifteen hundred initial come out of your budget too?
Yes.
Okay.
I know, but one more thing I'd like to add is, it's gonna be like a pilot program for the last three months, so they'll only pay a paraded agreement portion and then the big shots next year.
All right, do you have any more discussion on this?
No, sir.
I'll ask for a motion to approve, enter into a vendor contract for the Tank Assessors Office, sixteen thousand, two hundred dollar payment with a fifteen hundred dollar training initial set up. I'll ask for that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Let's talk tomorrow here, we, I know we've had some.
Phone calls. Just tell it, brother, tell it.
Lock phone.
She'll try to escape.
Can we enter into executive session?
I didn't, I didn't know, I couldn't do that on the phone.
We're all in the taking right now.
We're in the taking session.
You know, I I I know we, yeah, I mean, you gotta light it up at some point in time, but at the same time, um I know we've got plenty of phone calls and visits and things like that, um it would it would be very awesome if you could explain in James terms uh to where I could understand this myself, um because honestly, I'm 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 not saying this on the record, but I am, you know, I really thought I was kicking up smoke again, you know. So if you could kind of help us uh understand this a little bit better, I sure would appreciate it.
So um as many of you know, you know, Fann County has seen a huge increase in the number of sales um over the last two to three years, as well as the increase in values. Um you know, three year ago, we were processing fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred was a big year. Uh in two thousand twenty, we processed twenty-four hundred sales, and then in twenty-one, we processed twenty-eight hundred sales. So um to say we're growing, I mean, it it's obvious. Um a change in the market like this, in a situation that Fann County is in, which many of you may not understand, but Gilmore County has, you know, closer to sixty percent residential or and then the additional split up between commercial and industrial. Well, Fann County is eighty percent residential. So when you have transactions that take place like what's taken place in our county, it can really hit your ratio study with the partner ev- uh with the partner revenue. And so that's exactly what happened to us. Um we were watching the sales and watching our ratio study and hoping and praying things were gonna come down. Um and so in twenty-twenty, my ratio study was a thirty-six fifty, thirty-six point fifty, that was low for me. Twenty-one sales dropped me off the map at a thirty point fifty-five. So in order to fall within department revenue guidelines, you know, we had to meet their requirement, and their requirement is to have your ratio study at a thirty-six to forty-four, with forty being perfect. And in twenty-two, um the reevaluation that we that you were seeing those assessment notices coming from uh with those changes, that brings us back into compliance with the department revenue, and we're internally sitting at a thirty-five or thirty-eight point fifty-five. So many people don't really know that Fann County has um multiple levels of homestead, and so we are reaching out right now to our taxpayers and and trying to make sure you've got your proper level of homestead and that you've done everything you can to help you with these tax increases. Um we currently have state exemptions here in Fann County, as well as we have local exemptions. And our standard homestead exemption does not have any age requirement or any income requirement tied to it. Now, we have additional exemptions other than the standard, and those are three different age categories. We have an additional exemption of sixty-two, sixty-five, and seventy. Now, those do um have restrictions and requirements that has to be met, and that uh depends on your income. And they also, the state of Georgia um makes you use your age as of January first. So if you turn seventy this year, but you weren't seventy as of January first of last year, you will not get that exemption until twenty-twenty-three. So everybody that's coming in right now and talking to us and we're seeing that, you know, they've lost their homestead or they never filed for a homestead and um those people who filed for homestead between now and January first of twenty-twenty-three, it'll actually apply to their twenty-twenty-three tax bill. And that's state law. Um and then if you failed to file for your conservation exemptions during January first and April first um or refile, maybe you you were just going to continue it and you forgot to, um your assessment notice is gonna reflect that because when you didn't come in by a certain date, those exemptions was taken from you. And so you see this huge increase and and a lot of times taxpayers don't know that it's not a value change, but rather they've lost an exemption. So we're we're really combing our records for accuracy right now. Um and during your appeal period, which is your forty-five days from the date of the notice, forty-five days, typically that expires on the seventeenth. Since the seventeenth is a Friday, I mean, a Saturday, we rolled up to Monday, so Monday at five o'clock is the deadline.
This month?
Seventeenth, September, September.
September.
Say the date again.
Uh the seventeenth is a Friday, the eighteenth Saturday, nineteenth Sunday, so the twentieth.
Twentieth of September.
Yeah, and um what we've, what we would like to to ask the taxpayers is come into our office, you know, when there's a lot of bodies sitting there and we're talking to them, we're not gonna answer the phone and be disrespectful to the person in front of us. I have five people, four to five people waiting on bodies, and I have two to three people answering phones. I mean, we have triaged folks, we've got people sitting at the front of the courthouse and helping people to keep our distance as we need to into, we got tight quarters in our office, so we're having to try to work at best we can. But it's going great, um we've talked to a lot of taxpayers, and we've caught some homesteads that should have been rolled up that didn't. We've got people who think that they had homestead, didn't ever apply. Um and so it's a good time to check your entire account for accuracy. And if we go through the, you know, your account with you and we see that we got an error, we'll make a correction right there, we'll mail you a thirty-day notice. And, you know, at that point, you know, if you still think the taxes are too high or the value is too high, the tax is not what you're appealing, the value is what you're appealing. Um then, you know, we can talk appeal and go from there during your your forty-five day period. But um, you know, there's a few facts that taxpayers don't really understand, and that's these homesteads and these exemptions, and when we have them to offer, you just got to check your account and make sure you do or don't have something. So if you look online at Q Public, which are update, it's updated now, so it's got all the new values out there. So if you look online and you see um an S zero in the homestead field, you have no exemption.
S is?
S zero is no exemption. Anything over an S zero is meaning you're getting some sort of exemption. An S one is just our standard exemption, it doesn't matter how old you are or what your income is. And after that, they change, there's about nine different levels. Um and so, you know, we just are asking the taxpayers to be patient with us, let us check your records for accuracy and and go from there. Um a lot of people, you know, I feel like don't know that Fann County has one of the lowest mill rates around. Gilmore County's mill rate's eighteen point eighty-five, um Union County's mill rate is fifteen point seventy-six, and Fann County is fourteen point zero-two. So um with this readjustment to the digest and increase in the digest, you know, our work's done on our side. Now it's time for the school board and the board commissioners to take a look at their twenty-twenty-two mill rates. Because if those mill rates roll back, the tax bills will not be the estimated amount that's on that notice of assessment. The law says that because mill rates are set after notices are due to go out, that we use the best mill rates we have, which would be the last year, the previous year. And so we use twenty-one's mill rate, and so, you know, if the school in the county see fit to make some adjustments there, it's going to ease this burden somewhat.
Well, that being said, I I mean, I think I can speak for the other two commissioners, I know that uh board commissioners will do their part um with a miller rate to to do, roll back to to ease that burden. And I also spoke spoke with the Board of Education earlier today, when we were discussing the resolution, and uh um they they indicated to me that they feel they're gonna do exactly the same thing, and obviously they gave me permission to say that, or, because I I cannot tell, you know, on our meet, can we say that? Absolutely, so um, you know, we um, we both of us, we we hope to do our part to to make sure they use that burden uh for sure. Um I don't know what that final number actually will bring us down to. Um but I know with three point eight six, that's for Kansas portion, that's uh. Um, but I know with three point eight six, that's for Kansas portion, that's, uh, that's pretty low for us.
It is, you're going to be in the negative.
Look at fading on. Well, I appreciate it. Do you want me to give you a question, Mr.?
I have none. Well, I do, but I don't know, I, I, I'm just, yeah, no, no, I'm, I'll bop my tongue.
I'll see you between the hours of eight and five on Monday to Friday.
I'll, I'll see you before this. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks. Will you give that contract?
Okay. Um, number nine, Mr. Damon Hughes with USDA Wildlife Services. Uh, he's going to speak on the topic of oral rabies vaccine bait drop in the Fannin County area.
I'm going to have a short little presentation.
Sure.
Probably need to hear your panel.
Click and turn the panel over.
Yep, you should, you're on the screen.
Okay.
You're good.
I know y'all, y'all saw this last year, we've got a little bigger crowd this year. But every year, um, we, we try to, um, notify the, um, local government, law enforcement, and, uh, Board of Education, mainly principals, that, that we're going to be doing the oral rabies vaccine bait drop. So, um, been doing it by mail for a number of years, did email last year and, and I appreciate the time to do this because I really think doing it in person, especially in this venue, it, it gives me a little more opportunity to, to, um, to get it out to, to more citizens. Hope to have some, um, some press on it this year as we get closer in the, um, the first of October. So, um, but thanks again for the time allowing me to do this. Um, though y'all had a busy schedule tonight, and I, I appreciate you fitting me in. Um, we'll speak on the oral rabies vaccine bait drop in Georgia in twenty-twenty-two. We've been doing it in the, uh, in Georgia since two thousand three. And just last year, did we move this far to the east? Um, actually, we're all the way over into Reagan County now. I'll have some maps up here so you can kind of see where we are, um, and where we were. I do work for the United States Department of Agriculture, um, Animal Plant Health Services, Inspector Services, and Wildlife Services as the division with, with them, uh, that I'm with. Not going to go into too much detail in this, but, um, part of what we do is disease monitoring and management. And of course, rabies falls into that. In, in the United, in the lower forty-eight, we have five terrestrial strains of rabies. Just to make this short and sweet, sweet, we're focusing on the raccoon variant, which is the, um, which occurs in the green area there of the map. Why we chose this variant to focus on is because where this variant occurs, we have more spillover into, um, inter, various different interspecies, whether it be domestic or wildlife, more indirect exposure, exposures. Partially, this is due because the eastern U.S. is, is one of the more populated areas. Secondary is because it's the raccoon variant. As far as we know, any mammal can get any variant, but there tends to be more interspecies spillover with this variant. And, and eastern U.S. is just more populated, you have more, um, you know, people feeding cats on their back steps or their dogs on their, you know, porch. And raccoons are everywhere. Um, you know, some of the bigger populations are in, in some of the cities. So you just, you have more interaction with, with raccoons than most other species, such as skunks, fox, coyotes. And this will give you an idea of, of what I'm talking about. Um, all the little dots on there, regardless of color, are rabid raccoons that were, that were tested in twenty-nineteen. And you can see, even though in, in the, uh, South Central Skunk variant, which is the yellow, you, you have a few there, but predominantly, it's, it's all in the eastern U.S. So what, what does this oral rabies vaccine program consist of? Here in Georgia, we do it all aerially. Um, most of it is done with the fixed wing, the white planes up here. Um, and what that consists of is we'll do, we'll do flight lines, it's five hundred feet above ground level. So we're flying really low compared to most aircraft. We'll, um, the flight lines are fifteen hundred feet apart. So if you happen to be out on the days we're doing this in this area, you'll see a white plane. And it, it may be short distances, so it may go up and turn around, come right back, or it may be long distances. But it'll be, it'll be fairly evenly spaced over the area. And, um, we, we've had, you know, one of the reasons we, we let law enforcement know about this and local governments know about it is because we have people call, you know, it's a concern. I, I see these planes, you know, flying over, are they spraying something or, or what? What are they doing? Uh, it's, it's like I tell people, it is a government operation, but it's not a secret government operation. Um, there may be some of those going on, but I'm not aware of them. But if you see a, if you see a plane that looks similar to this, and it's, it's flying low and it's back and forth, and, and usually around the middle of October is when we do it, uh, that's more than likely what it is. We also do some helicopter work in urban suburban fringes. Currently, that's all in the, the northwestern part of the state from, you know, comes down out of Chattanooga. We do, uh, Dalton, Lafayette, and some of the smaller areas over there. I suspect in the future, we'll, we'll do some over, over some of the, the more urban areas, suburban areas in, in this region. But that's not, we're not currently doing that yet. So, let's see. Below Chattanooga, there, we, we were doing about all our parts of five counties, Dade, Walker, Catoosa, Whitfield, and Chautauqua County. And then last year, they added, um, added from there to the east. So we started that in two, two thousand three, and up until, like I say, last year, we were doing that area. And they, due to funding and, and some of the areas they took out of baiting elsewhere, they, they provided Georgia with these baits. Just to give you an idea, we dropped over a half million baits in twenty-twenty-one here in Georgia. And we've dropped over, um, three and a half million since, uh, two thousand three. And I don't know if you can see it too well, but that yellow and the orange, there's, there's little lines through there. That's our grid lines, all this done, all this is done by, um, GPS, GIS. And, um, we get in the plane, they, they punch in the, the areas that we're going to be flying that day. And, and they just, they just fly those patterns. So that's kind of what it looks like from, from a, you know, bird's eye view. And this just gives you an overall, uh, summary of, of what we've done, uh, last year nationwide. We do have a small project in Texas, small by comparison to, to the eastern region rabies. And it's, it's a different variant, this canine variant, um, trying to keep that down into Texas. It has been eradicated in, in, um, in the United States. So they're trying to keep that from coming over the border there to Rio Grande and, and the Texas border, or the Mexican border. But for, in the eastern U.S., we dropped nine million baits last year. Um, that covered fifty-two thousand square miles and included sixteen different states. Post-bait trapping will come up into this area, um, about four to six weeks after the, we bait. We'll trap a hundred and twenty raccoons. We'll, um, we'll mobilize those with drugs, take blood from them, and then we'll send the, the serum off that blood to a lab. We'll release the raccoon at the site where we caught it. Um, and matter of fact, I just, from that blood, they'll tell us how many, how many of those raccoons had the tyder for rabies or for the, um, the baits. And I, matter of fact, just, it's ironic, because just this morning, I got an email saying that, um, our tyders from last year was like thirty-four percent, which is probably one of the highest tyders we've had, um, if not the highest tyder since, uh, we, we started in two thousand three. To give you some idea, it's, it, I always get the question, well, is it working? In the counties that we're completely covering, Walker, Dade, uh, Catoosa, most of Chautauqua, um, we have very few rabies cases. We had one last year in Walker County, and that was probably the first one in six or seven years. Um, it was a skunk. Unfortunately, it was a, it was a, uh, was a contact case, where an individual had gotten bitten. Um, it was sent off to the state lab, and they don't, they don't type it. So I don't know if it was a raccoon variant or if it was a bat variant. I think they had a bat case last year too, that we would assume was a bat variant. So, um, it was kind of in the middle of the county, which is somewhat concerning. But there again, we don't, we don't know if it was a raccoon variant. And we do have, you know, you are going to have from time to time, something like that happen. You may have somebody moving a raccoon or, you know, some other issue. You know, climbing in a vehicle and moving from an area that's not, that's not being, uh, baited into an area that is. But most of those counties have seen very few to no, um, rabies cases, uh, the raccoon variant in the last, you know, five to ten years probably. And this is just what I was mentioning, we'll send the serum off and, and the tyder. Um, I'll spend several hours this next week in our tyder in the database, so we'll have that to look back on in the future. This question was asked last year, and I should have put it in last year. But this was tested in over sixty non-target animals, um, prior to its, its release and approval by the FDA. Um, and it's, it's a very safe bait. Occasionally, you'll get a dog that's, that's very effective at finding these on, out on the, um, out in the habitat, and they'll bring them back, they may eat several baits. It is a, it's a fish milk, um, bait, it's got fish meal on the outside of it. It's kind of a rich bait, and, and occasionally, we will get a dog that will eat several of these, and they'll get indigestion. But the bait itself is not, is not harmful to, to the animal. So, so that's a question that's commonly asked. And is there any questions I can answer? I'd be glad to.
Well, got armadillos, there's a lot of them around here anymore.
Yeah, armadillos, it's very rare to find an armadilla that, that has rabies. The only one I, I, there was one in Georgia, I think it was one or two years ago. And there again, I don't think it was typed, so we don't know what it was. I, I spoke to, uh, one of the experts, um, out of Atlanta, that he was telling me he'd only, he only knew of one other, um, armadillo, and I think it was out west somewhere. And it was in an area where they had bats, and they had the occasional, um, rabid bat. And they suspected that it probably come up on a bat that was, that had rabies and, and got bit. So, um, I doubt very seriously, many of these baits are picked up by raccoons. They probably are picked up by possums and skunks. And, um, now the, the thing is, what, how effective these are on, on other species, they might not be as effective because they were specifically made, uh, for raccoons and the raccoon strain. And, and every, every species is a little different. Yes, sir?
One other thing. I've heard so many of those, uh, armadillos in this area now, is, is people transporting them or they migrate to this floor?
They, they've migrated north over the past couple of decades, and, um, it's, it's just.
You see them all down on the side of the road where they've been killed?
Yes, sir, yeah, they're, they're everywhere and, uh, so.
I'll swing by.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know you said that these are mostly for, um, that are for raccoons and, I guess, the, uh, coyotes and all that. But, um, I heard you say something about bats, or they, um, because we've got a, um, pond of them down on one end. Some, some nights are out there and there, you know, there's quite a few bats out.
Yeah, and, and bats are one of the major, um, contacts that people have that, that, um, where they have to have really raccoons and, raccoons and bats are probably one and two. Um, the problem is, people, usually with bats, it's because they see one on the ground and, you know, they go to pick it up. Um, and, and the trouble with bats are their teeth are so sharp and they're so small. A lot of times, people that are bitten don't even realize they're bitten. Um, so actually, I think if you, if you call, um, say, environmental health, and you, you wake up and for whatever reason, there's a bat in your bedroom, even though you, you don't know for a fact that you've had an exposure with that animal, they're going to tell you to go ahead and get the, the post-exposure shots because you, you could have had a contact with it. The biggest thing is, if, if you have one in your room, or if you, you know, contact environmental health, they're the ones that, that handle that. Or if you, if you see one outside on the ground, stay away from it, keep your pets away from it. Um, you know, it really is, it's the same as with any wildlife, everybody wants to help, you know, a wounded animal or a hurt animal. But that's, that's really the worst thing you can do as far as.
Is there any way, because, um, you know, I don't mind being around because of the mosquitoes and all the danger around the water. But is there any way to, um, to get this treatment or whatever?
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be applicable for bats. I, I wouldn't be concerned about bats, like I say. The problem is when, when people interact with them, you know, physically. Um, I, I, I wouldn't be concerned, you know, I have them, I live out in, out in the country, and I have a lot of them around my place, enjoy watching them. So I, I, I wouldn't, that wouldn't be a major concern.
I, I got just a little echo, I, you know, why you find them on the ground like that?
Why's that?
Because they have to, they can't take off from the ground to fly. They have to fall and, and go, that's why, you know, when they're in these little bat houses and all, if you build the bat houses too low to the ground, you'll find them on the ground all the time because they got to have enough room to fall and, and take off.
And that's the thing, when they're on the ground, more likely there's something wrong with them.
Right, and they can't, they can't take off from the ground.
Yes, ma'am.
What if I find a bait in my front yard, can I move it?
You can. Um, we asked it, you know, you use a rubber glove or a plastic bag or something to move it. We, you, you can throw it away, we prefer if you throw it out in the bushes where, you know, a raccoon or, or other wildlife will, you know, have, have the opportunity to pick that up. So, but yeah, I, and, and really, it's, and most people, it's not going to be an issue, even if you touch a bait. But there are those people that have a reaction to the, you know, the fish meal or something that's open, or if the bait's been opened, possibly the, the vaccine that's in there. Um, so it's, it's not a, it's not a live vaccine or anything like that, so that part is, is not harmful. But, um, you could have a reaction to, to the, the fish meal or the vaccine. Yes, sir?
Yeah, back to the armadillos, have they done any kind of study that's early to find what the impact may or may not be?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of. You, you'll find in wildlife, it's, if, it's either, it's either one of these large species that, that everybody's interested in, or there's some human health implication, or it's threatening endanger, it's where the money is, that's the research that's done. And, um, you know, unless they start doing a tremendous amount of, of, say, agricultural damage or something like that, I don't foresee a, a major change in, in the, the research on armadillos.
Unless they don't file taxes next year.
Yeah.
If the armadillos are coming this way, or the, or the pythons coming this way too?
No, I don't suspect we'll, we'll see it this far north. I mean, they may move north some, but, you know, they're, they're cold-blooded animals, so they need that, that temperature differential to stay warm. I just don't, I don't see that happening.
I don't want them here.
And, and ha, you know, habitat differences between here and there, so. All right, Commissioner, that hit? Thank y'all again for the time, I appreciate it.
Very informative, and appreciate all the good questions there. Makes me want to stay away from bats and armadillos everywhere.
Go back to smoking.
Thank you. Yeah. No, I won't try my best, not. All right, brings us down to public commentary. If anybody wants to come up, raise your hand, tell us who you are, and, yes, sir? Come up.
I got a question. I live out in Lordton. Uh, you were talking about the percentages that, for the lost and the sloth.
Sloth, yeah.
Uh, is there a dollar amount attached to that?
Yeah, there is a dollar amount attached to it. Um, the lost, um, the lost actually, we go by a trend on that. I don't actually have a bottom line number, so we took the trend for the last, um, well, since two thousand nineteen is what we used on that. Um, the amount of sloths, um, was it fifty, fifty-six? Um, so, so that'd be fi, I think it's fifty-six, seven eighty-five, one thirty-one.
That's close.
Uh, it, it's around fifty-seven million is, is what we stand, um, to get it. It it's around fifty-seven million is is what we stand to give, obviously, people vote for it again. And our last loss was thirty million, so this this would be substantial for us.
And that's with no growth?
Yeah.
I think the rest was kind of dropped off here lately, too.
That's a totally different.
Yeah, that's totally different.
Well, they spend the money, you know.
Yeah.
The stuff for downtown, that's where it's in the air.
Yeah.
Only one other comment. Ms. Cochran was up here. I was one of the first ones in her office yesterday. And she explained it to me very well. I understood it. I ain't like it, but I understood, and and she did a good job.
Well, thanks.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else?
I did. But going back to the, I just, I still have a hard time wrapping my head around this. I know y'all can probably help me understand it, but so in a situation where you've got a property that is sold multiple times for, let's say, just pick a number, over a million dollars, let's say, and you go back and you look at the assessed value, and it's still around six hundred thousand, is is that a way that the so would the the tax assessment be saying that we do not recognize these over a million dollar sales? Or we don't understand that? That's the thing that we have a problem understanding, is that we realize that you're using averages, I guess, you know, based on square footage, stuff like that. But it seems like it's benefiting the people that paid more for their property and are being assessed less than the people that have held on to their properties, and now they're being assessed more. You see what I mean? It's kind of, I I I think everybody has a hard time understanding those things. And.
Is something you could answer that, I mean?
I can. I'm not quite understanding where you're coming from, and I apologize. Dawn's grandbaby had surgery today, that's why she stepped out. So she was just here.
Yeah, well, it's it's just like where we we have proven sales, you know, this sold in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, far over, let's say, a million dollars. But their assessment through, like, yesterday, when y'all put the twenty-twenty-two's out, they're still at, like, six hundred thousand. But yet, their neighbor, who has held on to their house, it made theirs go up. So I don't understand if it's a fair market value, a true fair market value, is what somebody's willing to pay for your property.
Okay. So what we analyzed is three years' worth of sales. We went back, and that's what the state allows us to do, is three years' worth of sales. We went through each sale and determined whether it was a fair market sale, or there was inventory included, or there was some factor that.
Let's use that as a for instance. If there's inventory included, what happens?
Then we would we would consider that a not-market sale, and it would not become a part of our evaluation.
Be in your average.
Right.
So I guess the way that it looks, the way that it looks like it washes out across the board, is using a three-year average is typically gonna benefit the people that pay more and their valuations are less than the people that paid way less and their valuations are more.
And what we don't want to do is try to compare apples to oranges. Everybody's home is just a slightly bit different. And we're looking at, we we appraise or we assess land values differently than we assess house values. On your assessment notice, you have a land value, you have a house value. All that is assessed differently. So that's why we're encouraging people to come in our office, so we can go over your value and make sure you're valued correctly.
And do you ever take into consideration the value that somebody, let's say, that they put a house on the market, you've got two thousand, two one-thousand-foot square square foot houses side by side, and they're identical, same builder, same whatever. Got the same view, same road frontage. This seller can provide three years of vacation rental history for seventy thousand dollars a year, and this guy can't.
That that has absolutely been taken into consideration. We'd be willing to discuss that.
So that would that would be, that would be good. Okay, so the second thing I wanted to ask, if I've got time, is I was up here a few months ago, and y'all were real helpful with, you sent me to Marie Woody to get a list of the surveys.
You could, go ahead.
Oh, a list of the surveys that the county had put this morning or the notice on, that they may not be able to get emergency services. And I checked with Marie, and she did send me a list of those, so that helps me when I'm doing property research in case there's ever a problem with your homeowner's insurance. The second thing that I came across, that if if land development had time to do, would help people like me, is that, so the state of Georgia adopts the international building codes, energy codes, electrical codes, all the codes. But they leave it up to the county on which codes they want to enforce. So when we have people, when I'm working with somebody that's having a home built, let's say, they'll say, well, you know, we'll get our CO and all's well because Georgia has the international building codes. But there's some, that they leave the leeway up to the county on that. So I always recommend that they get a third-party inspection, a code inspection. And I I feel silly doing that because they always think that I'm just trying to sell them a home inspection. But there's certain codes that, for whatever reason, or if there's certain codes that, for whatever reason, our county feels like that they don't need to recognize, and it could be because of our terrain or.
Well, I mean.
A certain, you know.
Could you give me a list of those codes, and I'll ask the land development?
It's the international building.
Well, I understand, but if if you're saying there are a list of codes that our folks are not enforcing because it's our way, I would like to have those codes, and I'll ask them why?
That's what we would like to have, is, you know, we're we come across home inspections where there's code violations, and the buyers want to know why. Why why are these code violations exist, and and we try to explain to them without getting too technical. We try to explain to them that, you know, each county in Georgia has a right to enforce the codes they want to enforce, you know. The the buyer can go back on the builder and sue the builder, you know, because the builders got to enforce the codes no matter what county they live in.
Let me let me jump back here to a situation that happened last year, when when there was a homeowner that actually they had two decks, and they built in a dish and ran the center to to connect the two decks. Um, we had no idea that that happened. And then all of a sudden, our E and Ts are up there, and the deck falls. So, you know, we
Too much weight.
We weren't able, we had no idea that that was going on. So there are instances where we we don't go back there.
There is. And that's that's what I was saying, is in there, like, one of them that we ran across not too long ago was the one, like, built in twenty twenty-two. But I think Georgia adopted the energy codes in two thousand and eight, which deals with your R values and all your insulation and stuff like that. There were several situations I came across in finished basements that had no insulation behind the drywall, between the drywall and concrete. So it was kind of like, though, that shock into somebody, because to to put the insulation in, it's gonna put, if you do blow in insulation, you gotta cut the sheet rock all the way around the perimeter of the room and stuff like that. So if there if there, and I realize con a concrete wall has some R value, you know, but it also puts off a lot of moisture back in to the house. So it's just a way that if 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 there are some things that they know that they feel like they don't need to enforce, like I said, it could just be the terrain, the way things are built here. If they could give us those things, we could prepare a buyer that's having a home constructed, and we could say, okay, here are the things that if they're important to you, you need to discuss it with their builder, because this is not gonna be part of your CO package, you know, with the county.
And I'd be glad to talk to Mr. Cochran for you, but also, if you reach out to him as well.
Yeah.
And and I'm not aware of any, but I'm not saying that there there ain't. But but yeah, I'd be glad to reach out to him tomorrow if you would follow up as well. I'd appreciate it.
I I have spoken to him about it in the past, that I was thinking, if we just, you know, if instead of trying to guess, if we just had a list, just a list, you know, if that would be, it might be hard to do, it might be simple to do, I don't know.
It might be too old.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry.
Having done the medical work for a number of years, when you get to guiding your code, you know, from your local area, you can make them better than state regulations, but you can't make them less than. Also, if, like they do throughout government, they leave it up, they don't make laws in Atlanta, but they're not gonna enforce them, they're gonna leave it up to you enforce. And that's all across the board, they're just not gonna send personnel up here to do it.
I'm saying ninety-nine percent of it, because I, D Y I, did it myself and didn't get a permit, didn't tell anybody, that's the one, keep my taxes down.
And you found that out. Yes, sir.
I want to address something right here in front of the courthouse. Speed bumps would help, but some of the cars seem that are pretty fast, it's almost hit me, come into ten and leave it out of the courthouse. And I don't I don't like the speed bumps, but that would slow down a more than just the sign.
I'll reach out to the city and see, see what we can do to make that happen.
But those rubber ones, they sound, and that's pretty easy to put in and replace.
Yeah, but say, some of those right there is about twenty-eight hundred dollars. They have to have, you have to have it, those are special because of fire trucks and animals. Those those are expensive. I do know that.
But they're paid that pretty damn.
Yes, we got some on, I mean, on the, yeah, Josh Hall up that way, too.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just talking about the speed, something slowing down in front of the courthouse here.
Right.
I see it every day.
I know there'll come a time where I can't weave the bob, but that keeps me on my toes.
They do, they do, y'all, they do, y'all.
I I do hear some people, like, hit the gas a little bit when I'm going across.
Somebody's standing out there, and they got those awards.
Yeah.
Tell them to get off their stuff, I want you crossing the street.
Anyone else?
Those fancy driving awards.
Yes, ma'am. You said out there, David, that's.
I can.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Debbie Holcomb, and I'm a volunteer at Animal Control. Have been for three and a half years. And I did do a complaint to all three commissioners last week. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for answering, although there wasn't anything to any specific thing that I did, but at least you answered me, and I appreciate it. And Jamie, I thank you for answering, and I'm sorry I didn't hear anything from Mr. C R C.
I'm sorry, too.
The thing that that gets me is that we have an interim director of a department. And you expect so many things from a director, a supervisor, a manager. And we are not getting it, any kind of management from our interim director. And it's been a long time since I've been to that podium to complain about animal control. And the reason that it's been a long time is because I knew you guys were working on trying to hire someone. And I've tried to be patient, and I've actually been the one who has encouraged our volunteers. Come on, hang on, light is at the end of the tunnel, we can do this, let's keep going, give them a chance, let's do it. Now, I'm the one who's on the edge, and they're trying to talk me off the ledge because it looks like we're gonna be faced with more months and months of searching for a director, possibly hiring one, and it's three, four, five months down the road. In the meantime, our taxpayer dollars are paying for an interim director who cannot, I mean, I even put in a public records request, thank you, Ms. Walker. I got her response right away, even though she was out of town. I got her response within a timely fashion. But the part that had to be sent to Animal Control, as of four-thirty this afternoon, I have not gotten an answer. Part of that is probably because our director does not know how to use a computer. He doesn't know how to do the software. If you look at the requirements that you guys are requesting for an interim or for a director, and I've done it, I went right straight down the list from back before it was put on Indeed, and our director cannot click those boxes. There has to be an alternative. Either we need a different person to step in as interim for a short term, which I do know there are people in our county who will have offered, they would like to step in, or we need to possibly merge with another organization to take over the shelter care, anything. Because right now, the we had a really bad reputation for animal control. It started to get better, we've got volunteers coming in again, they, you know, we're doing a lot more work with fundraising, we're we're getting a better reputation out there, or we were, but it's starting to turn back around again, and I don't know how long we can keep going the way we're going. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful, appreciate it.
I'm sorry they get back with you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close public commentary. And that brings us to executive session. We do have a need for executive session, I have a need for executive session. So I'll make the motion that we go into executive session.
Say.
All in favor? I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to come out of the executive session back into the room. All in favor? While in the executive session, while in executive session, we discuss real estate and personnel, no decisions made. I'll ask for a motion that we adjourn.
Make a motion.
I'll say it, all in favor?